I'll call the July meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. And tonight, we have some special guests with us and some special things going on tonight. With us tonight, we have Mr. Hunter Plemons, who's going to administer the oath of office for our new superintendent, Dr. Bill Nolte. And Dr. Bill, if you'd come forward, and Hunter, if you'll do the honors, we sure do appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you.
Members of the board, this is my lovely wife, Malene. So when I behave, you know she's done her work.
(laughter)
I will say your name.
Bill Nolte.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God.
So help me God.
I will say your name.
Bill Nolte.
Do further solemnly swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance in the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
So help me God.
I will say your name.
Bill Nolte.
Do further swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office superintendent of Haywood County Consolidated School System, according to the best of my skill and ability, according to law, so help me God.
So help me God. That's it. Again, I want to thank the board. Appreciate this opportunity, and I believe our brightest days are before us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations, Dr. Bill. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers if he'd lead the board in their prayer. Board members, would you please rise for the invocation? And immediately following the invocation, we will have our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Rogers?
Let us pray. Most kind graces heavenly Father, we thank you for the celebration that we can have here with our Haywood County Schools. We thank you for the people who are willing to serve, the children of this county and this state, and help them to have the best education possible, so they can be successful, productive citizens. Lord, we thank you for those that are here tonight, as advancements, and as we grow, and as our school system grows, and successful, opportunities are available to us. We pray that this board makes the best decisions, and give the people of this school system and the staff the best working tools that we can give them, so that they can do their jobs to the best of their abilities. We pray that you be with each and every one of them, as we are getting closer to starting another year of school. And Lord, we pray that this board, again, helps to do the things that we can do to make Haywood County Schools the greatest. I pray for your guidance and your direction. And Lord, I also want to pray a prayer of thanks again to the Hall family, as we lost one of a members of our community in Canton, that very active and very supportive of the children and the education of this county. And the education of children, and the success of children, was the tops of this family, as well as many community members and many citizens of Haywood County. They want the best, and we want the best. And we pray that you allow us to have those opportunities. We thank you for all that you've done for us. We praise your name. And Lord, we will always give you the praise and glory for everything you do for us. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Under announcements, our next regular board meeting will be held here at August 13th at 7:00 PM here at the Education Center. I will announce that we will probably have a call meeting sometime before that time, and we will do our diligence to make sure everybody gets due notice, and according to the state laws, on the open meeting law. So we'll advertise that in plenty of time, and give everybody heads up on that. But we will, more than likely, board members will have a call meeting, and we'll try to work it to where everybody can be here. The Teacher of the Year luncheon is already scheduled for Friday, September 7th, at 12:00 noon. So go ahead and block that out. And the location is to be determined, correct? Okay. The Fall Bingo is Saturday, September 15th, at 6:00 PM at the Canton Armory. If you can, try to support the Haywood County Schools Foundation by attending these events. Now, we have some special recognitions that we'd like to, and announcements that we'd like to share, and calling Dr. Nolte, if he would, to come forward and introduce our new folks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board, the staff, and guests. We did not have an opportunity to recognize these people publicly when they were named at the last meeting, but I just wanted to introduce some spokes to you. First of all, the new principal at Clyde Elementary School, Byron Burnett. Byron, if you'd like to come forward and say a word or two.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, I want to take a moment to thank each of you for the wonderful opportunity that you have given to me. To be named the principal of Clyde Elementary is one of the highest honors I have ever received. I want to thank a few people who have helped me on my way to where I am now. I want to thank Mr. Danny Miller, who gave me my first teaching job, Ms. Sean Paris, and Ms. Kim Shipman, who hired me as an assistant principal in Bethel, Mr. Greg Bailey, and Ms. Jill Barker, who have guided and mentored me during my time as an assistant principal at Pisgah, and Dr. Nolte for seeing some potential in me and hiring me as principal. And last but not least, I want to thank my family for supporting me through this entire journey. I'm a man who believes that everything happens for a reason. It's no accident that my path and Clyde's path meets at this time. I strongly believe we both have something good for each other. I've had a burden on my heart for the families of Clyde for over a decade through my work in the church, and I'm so thankful for the opportunity to continue that work in a different path. Clyde has a rich heritage and deep roots. This community is strong and resilient, and is always willing to lend a helping hand. People who have visited Clyde over the years remember it. They remember the people. All I keep hearing is how wonderful the people are at Clyde School, and the few that I've been fortunate enough to meet have surpassed any expectation I could possibly have. Clyde is a fantastic school and a fantastic community. I so look forward to being able to lead them on their continued path to excellence. Fly Cardinals, fly. Thank you.
Thank you. (laughter)
Thank you, Byron. The new principal at Waynesville Middle School, Todd Barbie.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, I just want to thank you for the trust you placed in me, not only tonight, but in prior appointments. There are too many people to mention who got me to where I am today. For those, and they know who they are, I am forever in your debt, and I won't make you nervous. On Thursday night after the press release, and all day Friday, my phone was going off nonstop with congratulatory messages, and some messages of, "You're going to the other side of the county," and some of those messages as well. And you know, I'm taking all those in stride. I wasn't lucky enough to be born in Haywood County, but in Haywood County, I found my home. So this might upset some people, but I hope not. But you know, kids are kids. Regardless if you were born in Ironduff or in Thickeady, they're still Haywood County kids, and they deserve the best education possible. Sure, there are differences in those communities, but they are still kids nonetheless, and deserve the best education and the chance for their future. I look forward to becoming more engaged in the Waynesville community, and working with the students and teachers there, and continue the upward momentum that now Dr. Putnam has created at Waynesville Middle. And I did not have to go out and buy a yellow tie. I had three of them. I just hid them. Thank you for this opportunity, and go Mounties.
Thank you. Ms. Fox is finishing her last couple of days of vacation. We can recognize her later, if you would like. At this time, I'd like to introduce the new principal at Pisgah High School, Clint Connor.
She's such a huge part of it.
Mr. Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Ms. Barker, Dr. Putnam, I appreciate it and honored, so privileged to get this recommendation to be the principal of Clyde Elementary. I want to thank a few people that stick out in my mind. For Haywood County, I've had 14 wonderful, wonderful years in Haywood County Schools. Dr. Upton, who brought me here, Mr. Danny Miller, who was the principal at Pisgah when I first got here, David Presley had a big part in that. Other people, Jill Barker and Jason Hines were the one that kind of led me into the administrative direction, and I appreciate them very, very much. Also thank Dr. Nolte for the trust he has in me to lead the Pisgah family. First of all, I want to thank my daughter, Katie Connor, who's the most precious blessing that's ever been a part of my life, and I know that this will not work without her being there, a part of it, and get ready for some Friday nights and some long hours, but you're going to be there with me. Also, to the Clyde family, I recently had a chance to listen to an FCA speaker, and he talked about why. You know, why would you want to leave somewhere after you've put in such hard work and dedication of five years? Byron, the Clyde teachers are amazing. They've done everything I've ever asked them to do. It's perfect. It's running. It's great. And I always think, you know, why would you want to leave that? And the one thing comes to my mind is, one of the teachers came up to me and said, "Clint, you gotta go." And I was like, "Whoa, you want me out of here that quick? Why?" And she goes, "If you can do to somebody at Pisgah, or some student at Pisgah, what you've done for me, then that's what it's all about." And she said, "You have to take your leadership up there and go." And you know, after she said that to me, it was very gratitude towards her, but you know, that's my mission. Most of all, I want to thank God for the position he's put me in. I trust him. That's the main thing. I want to glorify him in everything we do. And to the Pisgah Nation, it's a huge honor and privilege. I am so blessed to have this opportunity to lead those people. I get asked all the time, coming from INCA, what is the difference in Haywood County at Pisgah? And you know, they talk about athletics, they talk about academics, they talk about people, they talk about the town, they talk about the mill, they talk about a lot of different things. And I've thought about it, more than you could ever imagine, probably get asked once a month, and it's they own it. They live it, they breathe it. My little nephew helped me move in the other day, and he had on a T.C. Robertson shirt, and they about ran him out of town. And you know, we went fishing up the Pigeon River for a moment, and every car we passed had the Pisgah P on it. And I said, "That's the difference, Tyson. To where you go, to where I'm going, is those people love it, and they own it." And now it's my responsibility to help do that. And you know, the one thing I do know is, just because I got a big office, or a title, or a salary that's a little bit bigger, it doesn't mean anything to me. That's not what it's about. It's about kids, and it's about my responsibility in leading people, and helping them produce, and being the best that they can be. And I will not take that lightly. And at Clyde School, I look forward to the continued family tradition, and I think that's what's going to be really, really important, is building that family unit at Pisgah. Not that it's not there, but just continuing that. And you know, I'm going to end with a quote, and I think it's been really important at Clyde School. It's more of a soldier, talking about teachers and things, but it's GK Chesterton said, "The true soldier fights not because he hates who is in front of him, but because he loves who is behind him and beside him." And I think that's what the Pisgah family will do, and I look forward to it. I appreciate everybody. Go Bears. Thank you.
And now, on the central office side, our new technology director, M. Jackson.
Mr. Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, and other central office staff, it is an honor and a privilege to work with this leadership team as we explore new and inventive ways to use technology as a tool for teaching and learning. I'm thankful to work with an amazing IT staff, whose hard work helps schools with safety, data management, and accountability, to name a few. We make it our goal to keep everything running smoothly, so that we, as a school system, can focus on academic success. Thank you for this opportunity to serve the staff and students of Haywood County Schools.
And a fellow that I don't know what I would have done without him, really, the last four and a half months. Our new transportation director has carried many hats for us, and at this time, I'd like to introduce Mark Shepherd.
Different hat to wear tonight. No policies to read, just one after a while. I know it's a huge job to get all the children to school and back safely every day, and you know, the transportation director has always been someone that you just pick up the phone and call, and you know, you get help, whether it was Todd, or Rick Stiles, or whoever. Now it's going to be me. So you know, I know I have big shoes to fill, but I've been over there trying to move my stuff in and get settled in, and the guys over there, the ladies over there, they're really special people. They understand the magnitude of their task, how important it is to have all that equipment safely and properly operating, and everything scheduled like it's supposed to be, and it's a big job. And so I just got to get in there and roll up my sleeves and work with them. But I look forward to it, and I know it's an important task, and we'll do our best to get the kids to school on time every day.
Thank you, Mark. And our assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, Jill Barker.
Did a good job, Clint. Chairman Francis, members of the board, I'm just honored and humbled, and you know, to be, have this new opportunity in curriculum instruction. I'm also blessed, Todd, I'm born and raised in Haywood County, so, and to know the history of these schools. I love Haywood County Schools. I've been a part of this school system for a long time, and even as a child, and so these kids and these schools are very precious to me, and I'm passionate about our kids having the best education they can get. And I feel in this job, I take that very serious, that you know, we need to move forward, and we need to give them a world-class education. We know we have the best kids. We know Haywood County is special. People across the state know that. Everywhere we go, people say, "Oh, you're from Haywood County?" You know, that's God's country. You better believe it. And so I feel honored and very blessed here with our communities, our staff, our teachers, our students, and so I look forward to serving in this new capacity. But thank you to Dr. Bill, and for you, members of the board, for putting your faith in me. I promise I'll work hard and continue the pattern of academic excellence that Dr. Bill, and Dr. Ann, and people before them have established. And I know I have huge shoes to fill, but I promise you, I will work my hardest to do that. And to Pisgah High School, and some of my kids sitting over here, you gave me one of the best years of my career. I loved it. I'm going to miss you guys. I love y'all. You're great. I told you that every day, and you're in good hands with Mr. Connor, and he's going to do a fantastic job. But I will miss Pisgah High School, and I'm a graduate of Tuscaloosa. I feel very blessed, too, that I've got the love of both of those high schools in my heart. So I don't feel torn anymore, and my dad will start speaking to me again, maybe. But I do want to recognize my family right now, my husband, Bill, my daughter, Kennedy, my mom and dad. When you're a working mom, and you've got a 13-year-old, these people are the ones that pick up the pieces and fly behind me, and when I'm tired and emotional, they pick me up. So thank you. I love y'all, and you're everything to me. Thank you very much.
And last, but certainly not least, our new associate superintendent for curriculum instruction, Dr. Trevor Putnam.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, wow. I'm going to have to take a moment. What a big charge. Thank you for believing in me, and giving me this wonderful opportunity. An opportunity to serve all schools, all kids, east or west. What a wonderful opportunity, and I thank you for that, from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, Dr. Nolte, for putting trust in someone like me. I promise to work very hard, do my dead-level best. Born and raised here in Haywood, it's where my kids go to school, it's where I went to school. It's my heart, and I thank you for that. I've got some folks here with me who have supported me through thick and thin, and I got kids at the beach who couldn't be here. They planned their vacation, and off they went. Just a lot of family and support who have cared for me for many, many years, through some tough times and some good times, and for that, I'm extremely grateful. To the Waynesville community, wow. Seven of the best years of my life, and supported me, cared about me, asked about me. And some really talented folks over there. Mr. Barbie, you're in good shape. Don't make any drastic turns right or left. They know what to do, trust me. They had me as a principal, so you're in good hands. Also, I'd like Jill to have been on both sides of the county. Graduate of Pisgah High School, on both sides of the county, and again, my heart is for the Haywood County kids. Echo Mr. Connor, I don't care which side you're from, you're a kid, I'm going to take care of you, and I'm going to charge forward to make this school system the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess while they are out. I know some folks that need to come back in before we carry on our further business. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Call the meeting back to order at this time. Next item is agenda adjustments. We have had requests from Building and Grounds. Mr. Jimmy Rogers is going to add some items there between 18 and 19, if that's okay? 18 and 19? Is there any objection to adding the items from the Building and Grounds Committee?
Excellent.
There being none, we'll add that. Now, I would like to introduce Michelle Mull. Ms. Michelle, the floor is yours.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, thanks. Dr. Nolte, thanks. Ginny, could you come here just a second, please? So whenever the emails kept going out, employee recognition, I thought, well, you can't really send anything back to this one, because she's the person I would send it to. So that probably wouldn't work so well. So we've worked for a couple of months on this. Award of recognition presented to Ginny Wood-Valliere, in appreciation of your outstanding support to students and staff of Haywood County Schools.
I tell everybody that I have the best job in the county, because everywhere I go, people like to see me coming, because they know I'm bringing money, or doing something good. So thank you very much. You know, just like everyone else, I love working here, and I'm a product of Haywood County, and I just, I love it. So thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Ginny, congratulations on a well-deserved award. I know you work hard. I see you work hard, and thank you for all you do for Haywood County Schools and their students. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Michelle, for that. Thank you. Next, I would like to call on Lisa Glantz.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Nolte, members of the board, I'd like to introduce two agriculture teachers from Pisgah High School, Ms. Courtney Smith and Josh Justice. Please come forward. Pisgah FFA has done real good this year at the state level, and I'm going to turn it over to them and let them explain what each one of the awards that these kids earned, and how proud we are of them.
How do you want to do it? The first thing I'll talk about is the Building Our North Carolina Communities Award Project, which we call BONCA. BONCA is a community service-based award that chapters can apply for based upon some project that they have done within the past school year. So this year, our award was based off of our kindergarten days event. Students from Bethel, Metta Brook, North Canton, and Clyde Elementary visit our school farm. We usually have about 250 kids come through over the course of two days, and they do all kinds of agricultural awareness events, and learn about farms and agriculture, and where their food comes from. And this year, we had three students who presented that award, and we brought home this nice third-place plaque, so it was third place in the state. This is just a North Carolina competition. They don't do this in any other state that I know of. So we had that. We also had, three students receive state FFA degrees. To get a state degree, they have to have been a member for two years of FFA. They have to have earned $1,000, or worked 300 hours, or a combination of the two, to in their supervised agricultural experience projects. They have to have worked 25 community service hours, been an FFA member, an officer, a committee chairperson, a committee member, been able to give a six-minute speech, which is hard for anybody, let alone a high school student, complete 10 parliamentary procedure activities. There are just multitudes of requirements for them to get this degree. And so we had three students who received that degree this year as well, and then I'll let Josh talk about the other two things we did.
So the other two things that we did, one was our National Chapter Award, and this is something that is, it is on the national level, and it's our chapter is being judged off a rubric against other schools, and it's based off of five categories, and within each of the categories, we have to fill out three of the five subsections. This is no small task. It ends up being about roughly 28 pages or so for us to fill out. We have to have documentation. Ms. Smith and I spend about four months working with students and other people in the community to pull all of our resources together to get this accomplished. We are one of 25 at North Carolina that was chosen to go on to the national level to be judged. Last year, we received a two-star rating. This year, we hope to up our award a little bit, but it is a huge amount of work, and it's a great honor for us to even get to go to the national level and to be judged, especially when you're a small, little program like we are, to go up against some really big schools in our state, to get chosen. we are, to go up against some really big schools in our state to get chosen is a huge honor for us. The other thing that tonight that we're gonna recognize is our students who participate in the floriculture event. In the floriculture event, these students have to know 150-plus plants. They have to know how they grow, where they grow, botanical common name. They have to know the floral industry, how to put arrangements together. It's a huge task. This year, we were really excited. We came home with third in the state. That's saying a whole lot. I have been at this competition for many years, and the closest we've ever got to was fifth. And last year was that year for our fifth place. And this year, the kids come together and they wanted it. They had that thirst, that drive, and they came home with third place, and we couldn't be more happier for these guys. So we're gonna... This is just our preliminary National Chapter Award. We will get our stars and our plaque later on once we've been judged at the national
So for BONCA, our presenters were Callie Messer, Roy Rogers, who is unable to be here tonight, and Kaylee Smith.
On the floriculture team is Joey Ash, Kaitlin Moore, and Kaylee Smith.
State degrees were Roy Rogers, who again is not here tonight, Callie Messer, and Erica Oliger, who is also not able to be here. But I'm just really proud of these guys. They've worked really hard this year.
Yes, Mr. Smithers?
And congratulate... These awards are nice, but I want the board to know that at my request, they germinated 42 artichoke plants for me. And I only lost four of them. And that's pretty significant, considering 95% of all artichoke plants are grown in Monterey County, California. So, so far, so good. I've only lost four, but we're doing good. I'm shooting for the only artichokes in western North Carolina. So, congratulations. They got that done for me.
Ms. King, did anyone sign up to address the board this evening? No, they didn't. Thank you. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the June 11th, June 28th, July 3rd, July 12th, closing regular session minutes. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to be approved as presented. Ms. Barrett's made the motion. I hear second.
I'll second.
Say with Mr. Francis, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda, we have Ms. Belinda Trantham.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, and guests. Tonight, I'm presenting the Title I Budget, as I do every year. We will submit this in early August for approval, but I wanted to go ahead and go over this with you so that I can get board approval to submit our numbers. Our plan and allotment for 2018-19 from the state Title I is $1,930,107. You see a statement of assurances. That's the first page, and that's, in a nutshell, what we are required to do by the federal government if we accept the money. The budget includes $1,519,089.80 for K-5 Title I schools. This is divided out to the eight elementary schools based on low income from free and reduced students at each school. This includes carryover funds from last year. $161,200 is to blend with the North Carolina pre-K to support our five pre-K classrooms. $50,899 goes for instructional assistance to our broil hill. Pays for tutors, supplies they need, mostly tutoring, and our teachers do that. $45,500 to assist with homeless students. This pays 75% of one of our social workers. We have to set aside an amount for our foster student transportation, and this year, we set aside $2,500 to do that. This is a mandate. $100,000 for professional development for our teachers in Title I schools. $19,301.07 for parental engagement activities in Title I schools. $231,612.84 for administrative costs. That includes salaries for Mr. Moss, myself, my administrative assistant, indirect costs, supplies, materials, workman's comp, unemployment cost, insurance and retirement, et cetera. And there was an opportunity for private schools in Haywood County to participate, but none chose to participate. I have included the documents that I submit to CCIP on how we provide the pure people allotment. All that's divided up. Anyone have any questions? Me?
Anyone have any questions on this?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Title I Plan as presented.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Say with Mr. Clark, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Trantham. Next, I think we keep moving right on down to Lisa Glantz again.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Nolte, board members, I am presenting tonight the Title I Migrant Program Plan. The plan is, the first stages in the CCIP, I'm asking for approval tonight to move ahead with it. This plan covers expenses for migrants. It includes our budget, activities such as the Pigeon Center Summer Camp that we allow our kids to go to, and to also hire the recruiter/tutor that we have. Program has 42, right around $42,000, and it covers 50, right around 50 students that we have in the program. And we only have these students from April to October. So I'm asking for approval tonight to move ahead with the migrant program.
At this time, we entertain a motion to approve as presented. Dr. Rogers made the motion. I hear a second. Say with Ms. Barrett, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glantz. Next, we have Mr. Jason Hines.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, tonight, I've come to ask for approval for our Title II Plan. This is also part of the federal money that we get to support teachers. And I want to first thank Dr. Nolte for agreeing to let us have this money again this year to support our teachers. Not all school districts use the money for this purpose, but it has been very successful over the last 10 years or so. Whenever you ask teachers what is the best thing about coming to Haywood County as far as support that they get, they often mention the beginning teacher program that is in place. That is supported by, is directed by Diane Chadwick, and she is assisted by Crystal Query, Nancy Perrin, or Eriette Kay, who provide outstanding support for our beginning teachers. And that's through a mentor program where these teachers have a mentor in the school that are supposed to teach their grade level or subject area, that can help them with that. They are also supported by what we call beginning teacher liaisons, who work from the central office level to coordinate the different grade levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And when we survey beginning teachers, they often say this is probably one of the best things that helped them get through the first three years of teaching, is having this kind of support. That, out of about a $200,000 budget a year from the federal government, about $60,000 of it is spent on that beginning teacher program and paying our veteran teachers, although they would do it for free. We think it's a good thing to pay them to help our beginning teachers. We also use it to pay for payments for licensure, to take tests for licensure when we ask teachers to go get another license, for licensing fees to DPI, for tuition reimbursement when our teachers go back to school to improve their skills. We help them with that. The last two years, we've spent about $60,000 each year on national board certification. And so far, that has worked out, either certification or renewal, for about 80 teachers in our district that were added to the ones that were already there. And that's a 12% pay increase for them, and that's really about the only way they can get a pay increase anymore through the state, is through national board certification. So what we have done is paid the fees for them and paid coaches to help them with their portfolios when they submit them for approval. We also use it for staff development. We use it for recruitment and retention, to go to recruiting fairs and bring in the best teachers we can find. And we also use about $36,000 a year in supplements that y'all have approved for hard-to-staff positions that give some stability to those areas that often have high turnover. So we appreciate that. We appreciate your support of our teachers and our staff through this program. And so, if it's your will, we would like for you to approve this plan.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve this Title II Plan as presented.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Say with Mr. Francis, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Chairman, like Mr. Hines presented. At first, there's not a lot of... All schools and districts don't do this, and I think it is very beneficial to help our young teachers and as part of the recruitment and retention that we just definitely want to... We've got great people here, and we want to keep them coming here. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Back to Ms. Lisa Glantz. You're busy tonight. You're gonna get your steps in tonight.
Yeah, back and forth, back and forth. Hopefully, this is the last time I'll be up.
Your steps.
Okay.
On your feet.
Mr. Francis, Dr. Nolte, I'm asking permission tonight to move ahead with the Title III Plan for our English learners, students that we have in the school year for the 2018-19 school year. The plan is beginning stages in the CCIP. We have approximately 175 students that range from kindergarten to 12th grade. They're covered throughout the schools. We have them in every school but two. And 98% of them are Hispanics. We are beginning to get a few more languages, kids with different languages in, but as a whole, it's our Hispanic kids. We have three full-time teachers in this program to assist these students, and the plan itself tells how we go about serving these kids, the federal requirements that we have to go by to serve these. I'm asking for approval tonight to move ahead on the Title III application. Very yells.
Is telling, entertain a motion? Ms. Barrett's made the motion. Do I hear a second? Say with Mr. Henson, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Glantz. Next, we have Ms. Trantham back up, Ms. Belinda Trantham.
Chairman Francis, member of the board, Dr. Nolte. I want to talk a little bit about the Title IV. This is a fairly new federal program grant. It was first year last year. Last year, we received about $47,000, a little over that. We were told that it would probably only be a one-year thing, but people like this, so we got about three times the money this year. So I'm gonna go through what Title IV is again, since it's so new and what we're gonna do. I think you're gonna be very pleased. I met with stakeholders last Thursday and talked about the plan and come up with the ideas to implement. The Title IV is Student Support and Academic Enrichment Program, and it's intended to meet three things: well-rounded, safe and healthy students, or safe and healthy schools, and the use of technology to improve academic achievement and digital literacy for all three students, or for all students, sorry. We have to put a minimum of 20% in each category, and there's not a requirement for a certain percent in technology, but it cannot be infrastructure. It needs to be on increasing academic achievement. So for our well-rounded and safe and healthy schools this year, we are wanting to contract, partner with Meridium, to provide our high schools with therapists in the high schools to help with the mental health issues that are, as you know, increasingly concerning and more difficult for our schools to deal with. We feel like our elementary and our middle schools, we have some programs in place, but at our high schools, our counselors are more the academic, and they need some help, especially when there's crises. So our well-rounded and our safe and healthy will be to provide two counselors for our high schools. And hopefully, this will help cut down on in-school and out-of-school suspension, decrease our bullying, and decrease threat assessments in our schools. They'll also do a little bit with some, you know, along with mental health comes, what are you gonna do after you finish school? So they'll do a little bit of that, but primarily, it will be for our crisis and working with these students that have mental health issues. And then, for our effective use of technology, we again want to contract with experts to train our teachers in K-12. What our K-5 teachers need and 6-8 teachers and our 9-12 teachers are very different. And so we want to put some money in to help with training for our teachers. So this year, I said we almost got three times. We got $138,836 this year.
That's great.
And so with that, we want to put $110,000 in our well-rounded and safe and healthy students to pay for our two counselors that we're gonna add to the high schools, and then the remaining $28,836 to support effective use of technology. We are still working on our last year's. That is a 27-month... That is a 27-month grant along with this, so we still have last year's. We're going to do a little bit of amending to last year's and work on some bullying in our elementary schools from our last year's budget. But this time, I'd like to ask that you approve that.
I approve the Title IV budget.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Dr. Rogers made the motion. Do I hear second?
I'll second it.
Say with Mr. Clark, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? I'd just like to say, I am excited about the council being at the high school level, and money's going towards the elementary schools for the bullying issues. That's good news. That's real good news. Any other comments or questions? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Dr. Nolte.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests, just to echo some of the things Belinda said, these are really people who are licensed therapists. They'll partner with our current counselors and administrators. We think this will be really good in de-escalation situations where we have those periodically, and those can be addressed, and then we can involve the family quicker with a therapeutic service. So, we're real excited about the potential of these Title IV funds. We really can't use them since they're federal funds to supplant. It's illegal with federal funds to take them and pay for something we're already doing, so we thought this was the best solution. The item that is next on the agenda, the agenda is the Standard Health and Human Services Contract. You have seen this through the years. I sent it to Mr. Smathers a couple of weeks ago, and he called me, and we talked about it. This is what we commonly refer to as our Nursing Services Contract and Agreement, and it's in good standing, and we would ask you to approve it again for the 18-19 school year.
Okay. This time, we entertain a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the HHSA contract.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Francis. Do I hear second?
Second.
Say with Mr. Burnett, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shepherd. Is this the last time for policies for Mr. Shepherd?
Last time, yeah.
Dr. Putnam, take notice. We read every word of every policy.[1239.16][1239.16](Laughter.)
Not during the board meeting. We don't.[1243.16][1243.16](Laughter.) No, 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 no.
So, we don't have any policies for First Street tonight, but just for approval, we have 4370 student discipline hearing procedures. This is just an add-on to one that we approved last time in the spring updates, where we are now going to treat any audio, video, still, photographic recordings of students as student records, quote-unquote, as student records, if they're being retained in connection with any kind of incident, you know, discipline injury that pertains to a particular student. So, when people request these, they can obtain copies. We have to make sure that we, you know, make available to them in whatever format they need to have these.
Mr. Chairman, this time, I'd like to bring this motion that we approved, I mean, policy 4370. Okay. We have a motion to approve 4370 from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear second?
Second.
Say with Ms. Barrett, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You did a great job, Mr. Shepherd.
Sir?
That was short and sweet.
That's good.
You did good. Next, we have our finance chair, Larry Henson.
The finance committee met earlier today, and all the financial, monthly financial reports looked good, and I make a motion we approve.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Henson to approve the monthly financial reports. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Say with Mr. Clark, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we had an item from, a couple of items, I think, or three or four from Building and Grounds. We'll call Mr. Rogers.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick. I was a little bit late, so he got in there and got them started and got them rolling. First of all, the Buildings and Grounds has met, and we'd like to bring forth as a motion to accept in a bid from Neo Corporation for the demolition of Central Haywood High School's gymnasium for $52,400.
Okay. We have a motion from Building and Grounds for the demolition of Central Haywood High School Gym.
Demolition of Central Haywood High School gymnasium.
All right. To Neo Corporation. Do I hear second? Say with Dr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Now, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have another amendment that we, I mean, I'm sorry, that we amend our request to the Haywood County Commissioners for the $52,400 base, $52,400 base bid and up to $65,000 for the contaminated soil removal of the Central Haywood High School gymnasium demolition.
Okay.
In the form of a motion.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers.
I second that.
Say with Mr. Kirkpatrick, any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
One more, Mr. Chairman. Buildings and Grounds also would like to bring forth as a motion that we approve the extra cost for purchase of a maintenance vehicle and an excavator for our maintenance department.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear second?
Second.
Say with Dr. Rogers, any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Y'all been busy. Next, we have Dr. Nolte with our personnel for this month.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests, for your information, we have seven separations from employment, 11 status changes, and two leave of absence. For your approval, we have 16 employments, 14 status changes, one leave of absence, 25 contracted services, five employee coaches, one non-employee coach, and two volunteer services.
I make a motion we approve personnel as presented.
We have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear second?
Second.
Say with Mr. Henson, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Board, if it's okay, I'd like to recognize Todd Trantham, the principal of Tuscola High School, to recognize some folks.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to thank you tonight. I think anytime you have a large organization, in order to successfully run that organization, you have to have a great leadership team. And so, tonight, one of the things you have approved is for three members of that leadership team. And I want to introduce them to you tonight. I'll go in no particular order. The first one, Jacob Shelton. Jacob has been a half-time assistant principal at Tuscola and a half-time assistant principal at Waynesville Middle School. Jacob is going to be able to come to Tuscola full-time because of what you approved earlier this past spring, giving both of our high schools three APs instead of two APs. I think at the same time, you also gave us a half a month for our counselors. I'll tell you that at both of our high schools, we needed that to be successful and are already feeling the benefits of that, so we certainly want to, how much we appreciate that. The second one, I apologize, I already have apologized, Todd Barbie stole from Waynesville Middle School. That will be Graham Haynes. Graham comes to us from a very successful assistant principalship at Waynesville Middle School, so we're excited to have Graham Haynes. And the third one, Lisa Thompson. Lisa was a half-time assistant principal at Junealuska, as well as a half-time lead teacher. Lots of curriculum experience. We're excited to have all three of those on our leadership team, and we are ready to go. So, I want to thank you again tonight for your support and your willingness to approve those. I also want to thank Dr. Nolte for giving me a two-week head start on everybody else. Thank you.[1657.57][1657.57](Laughter.)
Congratulations to you three assistant principals. I know you'll do a great job and hit the ground running. I was looking at the calendar. The school's starting here before too long, guys. I feel like I need to get some vacation time in before that. But anyway, congratulations. And yet, Todd, you did get a, you got a punt since you were away easy. Quicker, we'll put it that way. Does anything else need to come before the board?
I would just like to say something. Dr. Bill, congratulations again on being appointed to the superintendent. I think you're, just like a lot of people have said tonight, you've got to have a good team under you, and I think it starts with those two sitting right there. I think you've done great with those two choices, and I'd just like to wish you well. I think you're, the school system's only go farther than it has. I know we've had a great school system, but I think brighter days are ahead. You have put people in place, starting with them too, and starting with, going back down to the principals with PESGA Tuscola. I think you've made a heck of a choice with all the appointments that we've made, so I look forward to being on this board, seeing things improve, continue.
Keep going.
Yes.
Climbing the ladder. There you go. Any other comments? Being nothing else, meeting adjourned.